Welcome back to the channel and thank you all for watching HCKT TV. Make sure you visit Everett's Kentucky, that's my hometown and the hometown of heroes. While you're visiting Everett, stay at Black Mountain Cabins and Campers located there in Everett's Kentucky, just minutes from the trailhead. Also, while you're in Everett, eat at the Southern Bell Restaurant located in downtown Everett. Also, if you support the channel, scan that QR code. Let's get started into this video. Thank you for watching. Where is the transparency at, Mr. Government? I can't see it. What's going on everyone? Welcome back to the channel. I want to thank you all for watching. What you're about to see is the Everett City Council Meeting. It took place today, February eighteenth, six o'clock. You're gonna see a councilwoman kinda bash at the police saying he's not been out doing his job. When he comes back with a hardcore answer, he's like, why don't you check the jail site? He said, you'll see the arrests I've been doing. I've been doing a lot to clean up this community. And indeed, they have. When they read the indictments and what they've done. Everett City's been, been doing their job. That's a fact. At least the police department has, it seems like. Then you got the same councilwoman who is complaining about a citizen named Mary Ford. How her water runs off on her property. Now they're up on top of a mountain. And they trying to get FEMA to come in here and look at this, up on top of a mountain. When we all know what happens to water when it runs on a mountain. It goes down. So, but she's fussing because the water goes in her yard when they cut a road up there or something. So, you're gonna hear all that. I mean, maybe Doge needs to come check these guys out. And you all, Black Mountains rates went way up. So, if you live in Black or uh, get water from Black Mountain Utility, please let me know how much your bill went up. They made twelve thousand dollars off the water last month. That's unreal. With a forty-seven percent water loss. That's unreal, guys. I think they're charging us citizens way too much for water, it sounds like. Another thing that blows my mind is all your all's water bills are estimated because they don't know where the water meters are. And they've been selling you all water for how long now? I mean, come on.
I have a follower to thank once again for another day that you give, Mr. Lord. Now as we all come together to conduct the business of the city, we ask for guidance and for wisdom, Your Lord, to make the decisions that are best for each and every member, for each and every person in the city, Your Lord. Watch over, lead, guide, and direct, which in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, City of Everett, City Council Meeting, dated Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It's gonna be called the Order. First thing on that agenda now is gonna be our financial report.
You have your uh, financial report there that's beginning with the check, uh, checking account balances. Uh, general fund ended January with thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Coal severance, twenty-three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. Fire, twenty thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Police drug, two hundred nine dollars fifty-two cents. Street fund, six thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Recreation, one thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-four cents. County garbage, one, eleven thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. Copper kids had six hundred dollars and ninety-two cents. Tourism had thirteen thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Sanitation, five thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty cents. Sewer operations, seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Sewer depreciation reserve, fifty dollars. Water operations, one hundred four thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and eight cents. The American Relief Land had seven hundred ten, two dollars and thirty-one cents. USDA bond account had five thousand, one hundred three dollars and thirteen cents. Water deposit had a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. KIA fund had a hundred dollars. And the credit card had nineteen hundred, ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Total revenue for the uh, general fund was fourteen thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents for the month of January. Two hundred nine thousand, twenty-two dollars and six cents for the uh, year to date. Expenditures were thirty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents for the month. Two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred nine dollars, forty cents for the year. It expended twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty cents more for the month than it brought in. And it expended fifty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents more on the year than what it has brought in so far. You have your uh, transactions there.
Are we still getting our uh, our VoIP servers through Spectre?
It's, yeah, it's our phone service. Yeah.
Sanitation, if there are no other questions. Brought in ten thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-four cents for the month. Expended ten thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents for the month. It expended fifty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents more for the month than it brought in. And it has brought in thirteen hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents more than it expended for the year. You see your list of transactions there. Follow that. Both of them. Whole lot goes on there though, can't. Uh, sewer fund brought in eighteen thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and four cents. It expended nineteen thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Uh, it expended a thousand, thirty-nine dollars and twenty, twenty cents more than it brought in. Uh, ten thousand, six dollars and eighty cents it brought in more than it expended on the year. Your transactions follow that. Water brought in sixty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-two cents for the month. It expended fifty thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and seven cents. It brought in twelve thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents more than it expended on the month. And it has brought in twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents more than it has expended on the year.
We're gonna wait time to look over it and see if the other questions, if any checks or any money.
Are we still doing business with uh, Coney Center or Typeria itself now? They did?
They did, but we're still doing business. Yes.
Everybody made the motion. Charlie said, is everybody good with the report? Of course, you have any questions, you know, you know, reach out to us. If you got any questions, raise your hands. Next is gonna be the minutes from uh, last meeting.
We've got two sets of minutes before we have the special call. First set of minutes, uh, December seventh eighth. Uh, regular scheduled council meeting. President was Mayor Eddie Manning, Charlie Couch, Larry Cottle, Preston Plaim, Ernie Woodard, and Jackie Redrow. Meeting is called to order. The financial report is read. Larry makes a motion to accept the report. Jackie seconds and all present agree. The minutes are read. Larry makes a motion to accept the minutes from the November meeting. Preston seconds and all present agree. The water report is read. Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Jackie seconds and all present agree. The first reading of the V mode rate increase ordinance, uh, Charlie makes a motion to accept the ordinance. Jackie seconds and all present agree. Uh, the second reading of the ordinance will be on Monday, the December twenty-third at five PM. The police report is read. Larry makes a motion to accept the police report. Charlie seconds and all present agree. If our report is given, Larry makes a motion to accept the report. Charlie seconds and all present agree. Charlie makes a motion to go into executive session per KRS sixty-one point eight, eight, one, zero, C for pending litigation. Jackie seconds and all present agree. Jackie makes a motion to come out of executive session with no action taken. Ernie makes a, um, Ernie seconds and all present agree. Charlie makes a motion to adjourn. Jackie seconds and all present agree. Meeting is adjourned.
All right, I give the most accepted minutes. Does everybody do the posted minutes? We'll pass them around and go in your sign. She's probably in the second one.
The special call, City Council Meeting, former, they December eighth, September third. Uh, president is Mayor Eddie Manning, Ernie Woodard, Jackie Redrow, Charlie Couch, and Larry Cottle. Meeting is called to order. Second reading of the V mode water ordinance. Larry makes a motion to accept the ordinance. Charlie seconds and all present agree. Jackie makes a motion to um, adjourn. Larry seconds and all present agree. Meeting is adjourned.
Get a motion to accept those. Everybody good with that seven minutes? We'll pass him around, get them signed too. And we'll go ahead and move on while you're signing those minutes while that BJ do tourism report.
Don't really have a lot for tourism at this point. Kind of had part of the year. Then obviously kind of want to talk about the condition of the parks. Uh, went over during the flooding this past weekend and kinda went over again today and looked at the uh, Borough Feeding and Water Park over there in Dartmoor. The back end of it's destroyed. Uh, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go over to see the guys and look at it, but it's got about four or five feet of sand. About twenty feet into the park, so uh, obviously we'll have to have some help with that. We've got events. Uh, we actually rolled out our event schedule last week and the week before for the year with all our tentative dates. And we've got some that were supposed to start, I think, at the middle of March, maybe with the yard sale again. So, we definitely have to work on that a little bit if you guys have time as, you know, the leaks and things kinda and the water dries down to go over and get some of that done. We had some guys working on the fence over there. We're gonna put a second gate in towards the trailer that's on the park end. So, we could, the flow of traffic will just go better when we host events. Uh, had a lot of congestion there on that one end. Uh, that should relieve a lot of problems. We may have to get the city to come over and take up one of those pylons. You know, where the fence used to be around it with the wires and uh, got it, tore out, and then the flood came. So, that's not a big thing right now. We're just trying to get it fixed first. Um, we do still have the bathhouse to install. Just waiting on the, if we'd put it in there now, it'd been in the middle of the river down there. So, we've learned well about where to put it now. And that's about it for tourism. Uh, it seems like we still have a little bit of money in the account, which is good. It seems like it's growing. We haven't spent anything much since Christmas. Uh, I think we had a wonderful Christmas. Everything worked out great, uh, for days, our tree lighting. And we're just looking forward to this year. Since we posted our schedule, we've had several people reach out already to uh, schedule the events, like as far as vendors go. And can have a barbecue competition again this year. We've already got competitors signed up for that. So, it seems like it's just steamrolling into, it's gonna turn out to be a really good year and we're excited about it. So, I hope you get it, all right? Do you all have any questions for me?
Hey, uh, the normal, it looks like that what I had from last month too. The normal income is three thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three pennies. Is that what it usually flukes around, you know?
It is. It, it sometimes it'll go a little bit higher when it's busy, like a busy weekend, but.
It's according to what you're buying because we got a lot of, a lot of people that said that was the best they'd seen for Christmas lighting in Everett in a long time. So, that.
We appreciate it.
It's gonna try to make you reasonably better, I guess. But is that the normal kind?
It is.
The income that you got coming in.
And, and the only other thing that we, I mean, that's, that's our main income. If, if we do a T-shirt sale or anything like that, that goes directly back into a project that we have. Uh, the Christmas project. Fortunately, we just, we had enough money in there and we'd saved a lot. And worked with Christie to use the, the city's card to go ahead and get that stuff.
I know we were gone, but uh, before we left, there was a lot of complimenting people from Harlan and there were about every.
And, and everybody really enjoyed that tree lighting. We, we kinda shut down Thirty-Eight here for about an hour. Had hot chocolate and stuff given away and it worked out really good. I think everybody, a lot of people came out and it was cold, so. Eddie came over and helped us plug it in. We thought we were gonna electrocute it, but we, we, we made it.
Good luck.
It, it just, a lot of our concerns and, and the things that we're battling is that each of these little parks is having power and having our fencing and stuff up complete. I know uh, down at the Middleton Division Park, we're working on some of it. They had some traffic driving beside it between the park and Preston's house and just sitting pets out, aching off. And so, we're trying to address some of those things, but at the same time, we're only making two or three grand a month. So, it's hard to, to do that plus host your events and buy things for those. Yep, you know, decorations and T-shirts and hiring bands and, but we really appreciate the city's work with us. Uh, you guys always supply guys and equipment, anything that we need that you can. And obviously, that always works better when we work together. So, we appreciate that very much.
You gotta figure the money fluctuates like tourism because, you know, in the summer months, you're gonna get a little more tourism tax in than the winter because you go ahead and more frequent restaurants or some of those.
And I've really been shocked that we've had as many as we've got now that are paying every month, that are on time. It's, you're not having to really hound anybody anymore. And I had, the addition to other businesses in towns definitely helped too. You know, we've got the restaurants and stuff back going, so that helps a lot. And you know, this last year, we had more visitors.
So, when you draw the first event at the park, is it in March, you say?
First, we're gonna start the yard sales back. I think it's either March or April. I can't remember which one I put it at.
We gotta give us a little bit of time to get some of this flooding cleaned up. And then once we get some of these streets cleaned up, help some people, then we can get a burn with the backhoe and try to start cleaning some of that sand and mud out.
As far as the end of the property, it looks like it held, but we had a tree fall. And then there was just a bunch of sand where the water stayed there that you just can't, I mean, we're just gonna have to move it. And we may have to get with the county a little bit on that track. I talked to Bill, uh, magistrate last fall. And he said to get it with him this summer, early spring, that they might come up and help us recondition that. And it's definitely gonna have to happen now because it probably twenty, thirty feet of it just washed out.
Yeah, Bill gets so much of a budget for all of his parks. I think if I ain't wrong, he's probably got more parks on District Two than he's got rest of counties. So, he gets a budget and, but he's always willing to help.
Yeah, he, he's been more than helpful, I mean, but it's, it's definitely, it doesn't need major work, but it's gonna take some.
And now that you see where the water line was over there, it makes advantage to putting those uh, bathhouses out and stuff. You know, the bathroom houses. Because we don't wanna put them, now we know, we don't wanna put them down low.
And we talked about, you know, building a little stage over there eventually to host some things. And that definitely tells you where to put it because, you know, and that's what I talked to, I talked to Bill a little bit Saturday over there. And we kinda looked at where the water was and, you know, we're, we're trying to go forward and use that more. But we're gonna have to do things a little bit differently. So, that may even move, you know, moving the trash a little bit and, you know, giving us more usable space. Because at the end of the day, we have to have it. And fortunately, we have City Hall's parking lot if you guys are still open to let us use that. So, we may have to have our first event or so over here just to get it rolling till we can get those, you know, things made. So, but I appreciate everything that you guys do for us.
Anybody got any questions for BJ? We'll get a motion to accept the tourism report, please.
I got the book.
Ernie the man, Jackie second. Does everybody good with tourism report? We're gonna move on. Woody's not able to make it, so Christie is gonna read you the water report. But Larry is here, which is our main call anyways. And that way, if you guys got any questions about water leaks, Larry can tell you a little bit about what he's been able to do and what they've been able to do. And of course, we got Mike here who'll probably speak during the water report. So, Christie can start out by giving to you and then you all can go from there.
If you all don't know Larry, he's now our distribution manager. He's uh, in classes for that, so.
He's the reason everybody on Clover Fort kept water this time.
Yeah, he, him and his crew kept our water for you all. So, we had water during the time that others did not this time, you all. They worked.
They worked their boats on.
Uh, they're, they worked really hard to keep you all water, not during the flood, but the time before. So, we're real proud of them for that. But if you look at your uh, water loss report, and Woody and I have talked before the meeting and he apologizes for not being here, something come up and he couldn't make it. But it shows that we produced fifteen million, nine hundred sixty thousand gallons. And that gives us a little higher uh, water loss at a forty-seven percent. Now, in the past couple of months, we've had, we've had a little couple of issues going on. Back December, our one broke and we had to send it in and get it fixed. And then, you know, January, of course, we had the snow that came around that didn't want to leave. And we, we couldn't find a lot of meters to read. And then this month, um, we've had some computer changeovers and a lot of our stuff didn't carry over like it needed to be. So, we've done, we've had to do a lot of estimates on, on a lot of our uh, readings. Now, we've had to go out and get a lot of readings by hand, but we've had to do a lot of estimates. So, it's kinda got our numbers fluctuating. And we're hoping that this will be more accurate for you all next month. Um, but Larry can kinda testify on your uh, loss amount. Forty-seven percent for me is just, that's just not a reliable number. I, I would say that it's probably more, would you say twenty-eight percent, Larry?
Around there, somewhere around there.
About twenty-eight, thirty percent right now. Um, but they fix leaks, I, I'd say daily. They're fixing a small one somewhere or a big one somewhere. But forty-seven percent's a little high, but again, that's an estimate for you, okay? So, hopefully by next month, we, we may have more of an accurate. But if you've got any questions that I can try to help you with, or we can, we can let Larry try to help you all with, just throw them at us. And then of course, Mike's here to talk to you about the tank and whatever else we can help you with.
Like I said this minute ago, guys, that we got a lot of, some of the county officials, state officials that talked to me during, during the last little bit and, you know, really wanted to know how we was able to keep water, you know, and stuff. And I told them it was our crew. They done a wonderful job getting leaks down this fall, this summer. They worked hard every day. We've kept, we've been able to keep our tanks full. It's just a, it's a complete one-eighty of what we was last year at this time. And I mean, you can thank the boys for that, Cleto, Larry, the whole crew. But getting people that care has been a, has been, has made a world of difference for us. But I, they, you know, we were lucky. There wasn't any water damages up here. And well, there was all over the county, but we was great. We had water come out the top of our tanks. So, but that's, they're the reasons. I mean, that's the reason we uh, you know, need to pay them better to keep better workers. That's what it boils down to. And it, and it shows. So, they were real complimentary of what we was able to do in the last six or eight months. So. Did y'all got anything for Larry? Any questions or anything? Appreciate it. Appreciate you. Well, we'll move on then. Let Mike do his thing in the water report too.
Yes, uh, we're, we're probably within two weeks of having DLW approval and advertising for the tank. I did go over some underground things with Cleto. We did, he noted a uh, manhole that we'll have to take out. And uh, so we've got that and that's the last thing that we put on the plan. So, it'll be advertised. We're looking to advertise in about two weeks uh, to open the bid, so.
So, what we looking at, you think, getting groundbreaking for the new tank?
Groundbreaking probably in thirty days.
What about that backhoe?
The backhoe has to wait till the end of the contingency money. And we did check and we may check with him. We talked about our vendor number. And we might, you, do you know check on the vendor number?
Uh, I don't have a clue what it would be. I've never had seen anything like that.
Because they questioned, well, this, the KIA question, there was something wrong with their vendor number. So, let's follow up on that. Because they had to actually, they started with the money, but they actually wrote a check instead of direct deposit.
Call me tomorrow and let me call Chris Wells, because he helps me with my sales.
Oh, okay.
And he may be able to help me with that vendor number.
Well, that, oh, we can, I can talk to James Nelson. I'll just call him direct at KIA and say.
Well, if not, if he can't help us, Chris will, because he helps me with the sales and the dunes, which is now a good thing. But I don't know why we would have two vendor numbers. It lays there's a confusion. Because one time before, the fire department had a number and they had to kill it and join it with ours.
Right.
So, that might be where they're seeing a separate vendor number.
Yeah, I can check back with that. And, and Chris Wells and I are working, I'm working on the preliminary engineering report for our uh, USDA, for the plant. And Chris Wells is helping with that.
Well, you can find out from here anyway.
Yeah, because we, everything has to go through a uh, federal portal now. There's no like individual sitting in the office in London that I can go talk to. You have to send it in the computer and then they respond back. So, it's.
Yeah.
That's before Doge has got a hold, gets a hold of it. So, we'll see what happens with that. But that's the way it is now.
So, we're probably looking at mid-April, getting groundbreaking, you think, for the new tank?
Yeah, I would say. And based on the weather, that's probably working out for the best. Because we, yeah, we don't know.
We're not hurting for water right now.
That's great, yeah. Exactly.
Do you have a sir?
No, that's all I have for now.
Anybody got anything from Mike? No, can I get a motion to accept the water report, please? Charlie made the motion, Larry said, does everybody do the water report? Next, we're gonna move on to the police report.
We're gonna wake them up. They finally do a covered up tape, then, you know.
They're busy this weekend during floods. Been dragging people out of our houses and.
Howdy, 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 howdy.
We good?
Yeah.
Apparently I missed up here. It's supposed to be January of twenty-twenty-five. I don't know why I have November of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, for the uh, month of January of twenty-twenty-five, we had a total of ten reports. Of those ten, five were drug related, two theft, one assault, and uh, two traffic collisions. We had four motorists assists, uh, fifteen response to complaints, five agency assists, eleven traffic stops, and fifteen arrests, and a total of three hundred and eighty man hours. Uh, through our drug program, we've uh, made, made decent leeway here. We arrested Jesse Napier from McCoy Street for trafficking methamphetamine. Uh, the Devin Kiefer case, uh, we talked about it, I think, in June or July of twenty-twenty-four over the pound of meth. Uh, he is currently in federal custody and hopefully here in the next couple of months, we'll be going to trial and see where things go from there as far as how much time he gets. Also, we indicted Anthony Nguyen for trafficking methamphetamine and arrested Josh Shanks and Bud Johnson who stole a vehicle from McCoy Street.
Any questions?
Do we still have the coughing weekend?
Still, I don't.
Do you still have the cop on the weekend? Is he on day or night?
He works in the east.
Cause I don't even see him that's more than that, why? Cause nobody don't ever see. I was just wondering if it, you know, what's your head?
Uh, I know, uh, Brian's been coming up here, and, uh, I've been with him a couple of times, and he tries to turn his black lights on, and he, he has been coming up on the hill.
I ain't never seen him.
Yeah, I've been working the weekend, so.
Because you're only two I see every now and then up on the hill.
I know, I've seen you a few times, it's.
Well, if you check the jail site, and, uh, just kinda watch my patrols, you'll see that I'm out, I'm making it for today.
You know, people just ask, so.
Okay.
That's all I just wanna know.
He's like you.
I've been in quite a few hours weekly to make sure the city stays safe, so. Been talking that afternoon.
Anybody got anything else from police department? Thank y'all. Get a motion to accept police report. Try to shake, is everybody here? Cleto, you go for the fire report, sir?
Hey, we've been a little busy here lately. Uh, had two deaths, one inside the city, one outside. Had one brush fire inside the city, one house fire outside the city. Had two metal calls outside the city. And had some, uh, this weekend had some flooding issues, and, uh, we done help, help evacuate people and, um, control traffic. Pretty much, yeah.
Been busy, ain't you? All right. Heard you made the motion for that one, you're right, second, go ahead. Everybody give the fire report? Okay. Next, we're gonna move into old business. Anybody got anything on old business? The only thing I had in old business was, we did pay Ken today, in the part we talked about, that was took care of, so we picked it up today. So that's behind us now. Uh, that's all I've got in old business. Everything else is pretty much new business, it's all about flooding. And we'll move on to new business, you know, we had, of course, we had the flood this weekend. Kinda dodged the bullet, you know, we did have some damage, and, of course, quite a few residents, including my own. Uh, so I'm sure people lost a few things, and had a lot of ditches overflowing, and there's nothing much we could do with that, there's only so much water that's low. Uh, the boys come out and work, Cleto and his crew was out Saturday and Sunday. So they was out the backhoe trying to. Yeah, Brown was out. I seen Brian wade through water carrying people, so. The boys was out all weekend, trying to see if we could try to get some water off of people, uh, very much you can do when it's that bad. That's probably the worst I've seen it since two thousand and two, I would guess. You know, we, we got a pretty good one in O two, so that's probably.
It's just about like the one in nineteen seventy-six.
Twenty-five year flood, it's a good flood, I mean.
Seventy-seven, I remember it.
But we got, uh, we got, I, I would say there's, I don't know how many houses, but we had plenty of houses that had some, you know, a lot of people lost some things. So we're trying to work with those residents, try to help them. Uh, city's always available to help them, as long as we can, so we're working with them. Uh, I know I've had several colony, and we've worked out some stuff to try to help them, so we'll continue to do that, that's what we're here for.
We're, um, not in dislexism, because we're trying to help the people needing their water to clean up and work with them a little bit on their water, so.
Does the county, and then the people who take care of the county on dysphoria, are they, are they working with you if you need something?
Oh, yeah, but listen, Bill Moore, you couldn't ask for no better magistrate than what we have. All I gotta do is pick up a phone, I'll build, Bill, Bill's wonderful. Me and Bill's been working today on a slide, I'll tell y'all a little bit about, I'm kinda worrying a little bit about, but, you know, Bill may, well, I mean, we're lucky to have Bill, he's, he works hard for us. I mean, I know that there, he works through the county, but anytime I call him about a city issue, he's usually run straight to him and help me. So, but we do have, kinda a little worried about it, we're working on it, the work is coming today. You can't really see it now, but we had a pretty bad slide over on Keister Street that I was concerned with. Saturday, the lady that lived over there, evacuated her from her house because it's, it's, it's pretty nasty looking. So we're gonna reach out to AM Mail tomorrow, I'm gonna try to see if I can get Mike's help with that. Since he's partners with them, you know. But we've got, there's, the way that slide is over there, I remember when I used to squirrel hunt up in their lot, there's a deep mine right above that slide, right over in North Everts, and there's several houses there that could be in some pretty bad danger, but it looked really bad during the, during the flood, during the storm. It don't look as bad today because you can't see it as well, but man, it looks rough then.
And it might be what's causing that over there, I don't know, the blizzards.
Yeah, we're having a lot of issues. That's something that we need to reach out to them and try to see if they can help those people, cause like I said, that'll, you, ultimately, you're looking at seven or eight houses over there that could be affected by that, and it could be deadly, so we're gonna reach out to them tomorrow and see if we can get some help with it.
Where is this?
It's, it's over on, in the Keister Street.
And where BJ, uh, he used to live.
No, it's down, it's, it's behind Larry's. It's behind Larry's.
I don't know.
It's right in behind where Jerry Nguyen lives. Y'all know where Jerry lives? Right, if you go over and look, you can see it.
The Hiltons.
The Hiltons, right on that lane behind Larry's. It's, it's pretty nasty looking slide, it's probably, I don't know how many hundred feet it is, I got a good video of it on my work phone. My work phone's not as good as my phone, I'm gonna try to get a better video, but you can see it really good.
There was a deep mine there one time?
There was a deep mines above it. Yeah, there used to be a road that went right in behind it, right behind Palm White, so it went right up into it. So it's right above it, so we need to get them to come look at this, to see if we can get some help with it. There's some trees up there that I'm really scared about, too, that's laying during the slide, that slid. So we wanna try to reach out to them and try to see if we can get some help. You know, we had that big sliding hill, it was over about seven or eight years ago, if you remember it. A lot of houses were involved, and this one could be, you know, could be like that. Just, we just wanna err on the side of caution always when it comes to people's safety, so.
I'll give Christie get the addresses, cause they wanna know the addresses and the names of the people, the people in the house.
Yeah, and there, it's probably gonna, like I said, it'll probably, there's several houses over, if it was, if that was to come off, it'd probably get said, like, well, everything, I'll wear the railroad tracks probably, or.
Yeah.
It could be bad. And it looked, I don't know if y'all looked at it during the flood, it looked really bad Saturday.
It was flooding, but I've never seen that like that.
It was bad Saturday, and I've got a video of it on this phone, probably not as good as what you'll see on my other phone, but my other phone don't send them real good. But there's a, I kinda got a video of that, and look up on the hill above it.
Yeah.
Look there. And see, all them houses on Keister Street are all below that. This ain't much of a video, but it's the best we had. I took it from my porch while I was watching all the water in. See that slide up above them houses? That's a pretty good slide, and it looked really bad during the storm. So that's what we're looking at right there. Right there's the houses, and here in seconds, you'll see this, start seeing, see it up there? Yeah, there's, all them houses on Keister Street there are all involved in that.
Don't look good.
And there's the deep mines, there's old deep mines right up there. So you can see it good in that video, but I, I'm gonna try to get a better video off my other phone. That's a pretty good slide. See it, Larry? You look above Jerry's there. That's a pretty good slide, and it come, it come right down them houses. There's the houses on Keister. And if you look, there's your slide coming down that day, so we gotta kinda, we gotta kinda get into that, start looking at that. See if we can get AM Mail to help us. Like I said, there is no mines above it, so it could blow out. So it could be.
Yeah, that looks bad.
Danger situation. We just, like I said, we just wanna err on the side of caution. And, uh, so any help you can give us, man, we would really appreciate it, get them in there and let them look at that, and.
I'll get the addresses and stuff, and then send an email to, uh, those guys and get that started off.
We've got another slide, too, that, that the county mentioned to me, that's somewhere below with. I'm just gonna have to try to figure out where it's at, because I can't, I haven't seen anything through there, it's just those ditches overflow between, uh, right there by Bell Crossing. I don't know if there's a slide in there or not, but.
He posted a line.
So there's something, well, we may have to get some drone videos of it. But we're gonna, we'll, we'll get them to look at them, too, but. Anybody got anything else on new business? That's all I really have is flooding.
Well, I, well, as I talked to Cleto here, he, this has been happening since that guy put his trailer up there, made a road. This is what he damaged my yard every time it rains. It's eating my bank up.
That's probably a good question.
But what, what does he say when you confront him, maybe?
Well, they let him make a road up there to put his trailer up there. It was never a road. Now, all that rain comes down in my yard. It's eating my bank up. It's eating it now.
No, wait a minute, have they damaged your road, however?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. That's supposed to be.
They've made a road where.
Yeah, before he can put his trailer up there. And then they.
That's your yard.
I don't care.
You got two officers that will make.
That's probably, and you got a lawyer sitting right here, that's probably a good question to ask.
It's eating my bank.
Yeah.
And every time it rains, it eats it out. And I, and then just, the road gonna fall.
Is that, is that above your trailer, that out there?
Above my house.
Well, I know.
They're tiny and small.
Been up there, I've seen it, but that, you, uh, have you threatened him with legal or, or anything?
Well, well, Murray Ford them say, I don't own it, I don't know who owns the lot.
Who says they don't own?
Murray Ford, that's who owns the lot.
But they say they don't own it?
Yeah, yeah.
But who, so who put the road in?
It's the main road, the drive. It's the main road every, cause he comes by the cross.
Yeah.
And next time you ever go by there, you can see where the rain done eaten that stuff.
So they, but they, did they make the road to get that trailer up there? Is that what you're saying?
What they did when they came up, they wouldn't go up by where AC land, cause they couldn't get the trailer up there. So they let, uh, this, uh, dust make a road.
Through, through their property.
Right, and now, ever since he did that, all the rain comes on top of it. That's what he does. And every time it rains, that's what happened.
I mean, I've seen a lot of issues over here, is when people's built their yard up and flooded their neighbors, and that usually has been silly to happen.
And it needs some ditches or something where it kicking the water. When all this water goes on May, it goes down on, um, Sioux Pass. It's, it's done it all her yard though.
But does the city own any of that stuff?
It's just the main road, the city's main road, everybody.
School Street?
Yeah, on School Street.
The hill, but the hill, where they built the road is not the city property, though, is it?
No, uh-uh.
And they built, they built some on their property.
Yeah, they made a road for him to get that double-wide trailer up there.
But, and what they did to their property is causing water to come down on you.
Right.
It's probably, you probably had to sue him civilly, I don't know that, uh, we can't really tell somebody what to do with their property.
I know, but it just ain't up my yard though, yeah. I don't know if you can be, I know it's a ditch there, but it needs to be open.
Listen, the city ordinance, they have to put a culvert in it.
Yeah.
That water is going to the ditch. Is that ditch open or?
No, no.
It's closed?
It's closed.
How much would it have for you to get that up?
I don't know, I don't know.
And there is, is a state.
It used to be some, uh, it used to be ditches there. They done just messed up everything up there, you know, it's, ain't it, Cleto?
It is a mess, uh, only one side is eating the road out a little bit, but JD, uh, he's looking at it, he gonna talk his.
Old FEMA, FEMA guy?
Yeah. He's gonna look at it.
Cause the fire hydrant is there, there's a little ditch there, but it's coated up.
So if the FEMA, if they, JD gets up there and deems that it's water damage from flooding, and FEMA, could FEMA help us with ditching up there?
Absolutely.
I know they're working on it.
He has pictures of it and documents of it.
Yeah, cause this happened every time it rains.
That would be the way the city would be involved, if FEMA got involved and done that, but I've seen episodes where people's turned the water on their neighbors, you know, and ends up paying civil matter, and it stinks, but that's just the way it is. But now, if he's got, if he's, if he can get us some help with FEMA, then
Yeah, cause a lot.
FEMA may go up there and open the ditches back up, regardless of what they think.
Cause a lot of water comes out that hill and the, the garden things are, needs to be cleaned off and everything, water run. Poor Tammy was out there trying to kick the right, a water off of her. She was out there sweeping.
We gotta remember one thing, that's probably the worst flood we've had in a long time. They said the fifth worst on record, so we're gonna have water.
Yeah, I had.
As Mary, if you talk to Mary, and she's just telling you she don't know it.
I done talked to Mary till I'm turning.
She, cause she don't.
That's it. I done talked to her about the walnut trees, everything.
Who's Mary?
Mary Ford.
That's the Mary Ford that.
Yeah, she's the one pays property taxes, huh?
Yeah.
She pays the property tax.
Yeah, and she says she's scared they might fall on my house.
Where did this FEMA guy?
He's been around several times for, for over the last three or four months.
Yeah.
And he's just actually up here, um,
Yeah, they said a meeting last week about it. He's trying to get us some funding for some of the flood, that didn't have nothing to do with this one, this was before this. He's trying to help us with some culverts and flood damage.
Yeah, cause it's a lot of them up there, it's stopped up, it's a lot of the ditches, it's stopped up, and it's a lot comes off on Disney Street, too. A bunch.
Are there, are there culverts?
You know.
If there are, that's one thing, dude, but.
I don't know if there was a ditch, I don't know if there's any ditching up there on that side of that property or not.
It is, uh, which one, where I'm at?
If that's the case, they've covered it up.
Oh, yeah, they done covered them, yeah, they done covered them up, yeah.
We had a ditch run all the way down that side of the road at one time, cause it come out on School Street.
Yeah.
Cause we went in there and stopped it plenty of times, but I don't know if they've covered that up with the road up there or not.
See, cause all that water, when it comes on me, and it goes straight at the road and down on Fox Street, it, that's where it goes, when it start raining.
You're threatening sewer, that's no good, is it?
Huh?
You're threatening sewer, that's no good, is it?
Oh, no. So.
Maybe FEMA.
Maybe one of my kids may fall there.
She got a walnut tree, too, a third, it's on your house.
Oh, yeah, she got two of them, uh, it damaged my, uh, side.
Good luck.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know.
We can't, we can't go in the ways properly, we don't know, fix them, and if it's a ditch, if it's a ditch on down the road.
Ditches, I just hope they, if they do fix the ditches there, and maybe they'll knock some of the water off of me, because it's just turned my yard up and I keep, I, I quit buying grass to fix my yard up, so.
I mean, I've seen people turn water like that, it's just simple.
It's, I mean, it is, unless, unless it's got something to do with their property that we can own, you know.
But if FEMA looks at that ditch up there, if they can get us, if they can, I mean, they got more struggling.
Yeah, they could, they could, they could do something, yeah.
Well, I'll talk to JD about it, too, cause now, he was in here last week, they had a meeting last week, Cleto went for us, actually, then on Zoom.
I think all of, all that's on hold right now till they get done doing their audit.
They had more. All right, anybody got anything else on new business? All right, anybody got anything in the audience? If not, then somebody send us home.
Okay, we just.
Meet the jurors.
All right, everyone, I want to thank you all for watching. Make sure you like, comment, subscribe, and share, all that good stuff. I don't know, guys. Lot of craziness going on there, I think. Anyway, maybe we need to doge down here in Everts to see where all these millions of dollars is fixing to go. I mean, we're gonna be groundbreaking for a new water tank in thirty days, y'all heard that? Anyway, guys, just make sure you like, comment, subscribe, share, tickle that little bell, and I'll see you guys on the next one. Thank you all for watching.